Councilwoman Manica, here. Councilwoman Proton Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Here, thank you very much. So we have three items on the workshop tonight. One is to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot to 309 Tuxedo. You'll have to remind me how we motion for this to come over here so that you can lead the discussion. The Safe Streets for All Action Plan and a proposal to provide planning services for the city of Highland Park. We have an hour, so I'm going to divide this into twelve-minute blocks to make sure that we at least give every item here an opportunity to be discussed. I believe this is coming out of Community Economic Development. Mr. Clyburn for the first one. Does anyone recall who motioned for this to come over to the workshop?
I don't remember who called for it to come to the workshop, and I remember we needed more information or something we needed to talk about it.
So why don't we, well, thank you Director Clyburn for coming to support us tonight. What I'll do is I'll just turn this over to the body, because again, I don't recall what led us here, and I want to make sure that whatever questions related to, we have the application attached to the resolution, so Director Clyburn, the floor is yours.
Alright, good evening, Council, Presidents, yes. Thank you for the floor. So this offer to purchase came in a little while ago. This is a developer who has other properties here in Highland Park and some other places. His plan is to rehab the home with the lot next to it, and I do have him here for open discussion and answer questions. So if you don't mind, I could...
And let me, um, let me do this for him too. Let me go ahead and get his, his property up here. Come on, Mr. McNeil, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna be typing while you... Alright, the podium. So, uh, council, again, the floor is yours. Are we proceeding on this?
Hi, I'm just gonna ask a few questions. Does this property look the same way? Is it an old picture?
Uh, that is an older picture. Uh, we've done a little bit to landscape it, cleaned it up, and we've actually boarded it up securely all the way, which was one of the requirements for Michigan-based insurance company to put full assurance on there. So it looks similar, um, but just a few different things, mainly the security of it and a little bit more cleaning up of the landscape.
And I think, so I'm just trying to, as President Thomas was saying, move back to our reference. I feel like it could be a different one. It was one that we looked at that already had gravel. Does this one have gravel right next to it already? Not, not gravel, like stones or rocks?
No, ma'am.
And how many units are in this building?
Four units, four, four two-bedroom, one-bathroom units.
So you want to make this into a parking lot?
Well, parking lot and green space. So the idea of the project is to create a VA housing, which is a underserved community. Um, and right now, as you can see on the property, there's very little green space on the rear of the property. There's probably maybe ten, fifteen feet on the rear of the property. So the idea is for the VAs to have a little bit of green space for community engagement, and then, you know, with multi-units, parking is a, a very big deal right now. Uh, we'd like to create a secure, safe environment for the residents to have, you know, secured, dedicated parking, so they're not parking on the street or down the streets, you know, uh, that, that kind of makes people feel a lot better when it comes to multi-units, if they can have at least one parking space.
And when you say green space?
Like lawn area, lawn area. Just because I would have put like a gazebo out there, just so they can have, do some outdoor, if it's even if it's just to sit out there and, and talk to somebody, sit out, have a smoke, whatever the case may be, there isn't really room for that right now um, on the one lot itself where the structure actually sits.
Ms. Manica, I took the liberty of pulling up the property here. If you would take a look at this older representation of Google Maps, it shows that this...
No, that's, that's actually across, directly across the street.
Okay, so the address that we're looking at here now, 309, this is 315, let me go to 309?
Yeah, that's, that's directly across the street.
So you're, so you are, this is your building?
Yep, that's it right there. And then the lot to the, directly to the left, which would be the east, is the one that I am seeking.
So this one here?
Acquire, to the left.
This is my left, your right?
My, my left, well, to the left of the property, we're standing in front of it.
Okay, so...
Yeah.
That will put us right here, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me give you an overview of that too, Ms. Manica. Uh, I just have to change the map. So, um, to members of council, my, I have a, my question is, what is the, uh, are you familiar with the threshold for the disposition of the lots? Because I know we had talked a lot about ordinances in, in the past. That threshold is what? Making sure all the bills are paid, five hundred dollars for the price of the lot, having a plan for it. Is there anything that I'm overlooking?
All debts are paid to the city, and everything else, the application is complete.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, that particular property, I purchased it in January, and I began seeking to acquire the adjacent lot, uh, February of this year.
Oh, this is worth pulling up?
Yes.
This is definitely...
Um, actually, um, I renovated myself. We renovated a property on McLean, uh, 120 McLean, which was a, a house that was in terrible shape many years ago. Actually, we sold it for two hundred and fifty thousand, December two thousand twenty-one. Uh, one of the neighbors on that block was kind of helping us with the lawn over there, and he, he's retired, so he kind of helps clean, cut the lawn over there on, uh, on that property for me.
Is that the house that we talked about across the street?
No, McLean. So I've, I've renovated some other properties in Highland Park over the years, and it made some, you know, uh, you know, some, 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 some relationships. So I got a gentleman, he maintains that property on Tuxedo for me.
So, um, this is a, I'm sorry, you have, you have more, Ms. Manica?
I did.
I was just about to say, I wanted to draw your attention to this image that you see of this block. Now, okay, but as somebody who owned a bunch of vacant lots, that right there shows me, this is an old picture. This shows me that somebody is taking care of this. Are these all city-owned lots, Mr. Clyburn?
A lot of them.
A lot of them are. Okay, so considering this is between Hamilton and Tuxedo, years ago, this used to be a probably an easy spot for numbers. I'm pretty sure, but it looks clean. It looks pretty clean to me right now. Um, even the, this image of it, I mean, these are updated, I think, every six to twelve months. These pictures are updated. I'm just saying that the Google Maps, this is every six to eight months. So as buildings come down in our city, we don't have anything on Google Maps that's additional years old. This is a unique opportunity for, uh, existing property, as the campaign is calling us. This is a unique opportunity for an existing property owner to, who is, who is already providing a resource for a community to, to really do something unique and special. Um, Highland Park is the last place in south, in the southeastern portion of Metro Detroit, where you have, um, local buyers that look like us have an opportunity to buy a property like this. And I just thought it was the one, I didn't understand the opportunity you had here on this whole corner. But Ms. Manica, you had mentioned before about the idea of encouraging developers to come in. This is the type of corner that I would say we should be having conversations about, where you have a property owner that's already invested for some residential housing, but you have other spaces over here that, I mean, this would be a great test case for us to try and look at, to see what, um... I mean, this is a place to play around with ideas, because we're seeing what one entrepreneur is doing. And so we... I mean, we have a person who has a residential piece of property right here, and they're looking to provide, these are their amenities, parking, one of the biggest issues that we have in our city. We, we, you can only park on the south side of the street in Highland Park. It, that's going to become an issue in the future as our city gets more density. So right now, you have people who have adjacent lots, because this gentleman is, is unique, but not as much as, there are a lot of people like him who own property here, who are landlords, who take good care of their property, and they're trying to expand it. So there are a lot more of him. This gentleman is an example of, especially somebody, you from Detroit?
I am.
Yep, so I mean, though the investors in Highland Park, by and large, they're small property owners. They're not big property owners. They're individuals that own two or three pieces of property. The idea of being able to make that a more attractive place for people, they're breaking into cars on the north end, you know what I mean? You can't, there's not, there's no places to park on the street, like if they have to come and run a plow through, something like that. They can get four, six, eight parking spaces in. And I mean, there are four cars in my driveway. And I gotta, I gotta drive with, what I'm saying. So that just means you might be able to get four, six, eight parking spaces in, and then you can do other things with it. Somebody have a birthday, everybody take their car out, they can barbecue off the street on private property. So this, these are just some ideas we're throwing on. Come on in, Ms. Manica. Yep, I'm sorry, I just wanted to just toss that in there for conversation.
Okay, so you want to make...
I do not.
So my next question is, um, do you have a house you need to move to?
Uh, that I'm not aware of.
So what you're trying to do with the property?
Um, I want to turn it into VA housing. Well, it really kind of depends upon this process, to be honest. Uh, my, my initial plan was I've been hav- having conversations with the MEDC um, since March, um, and the whole project is kind of predicated on being able to get this adjacent lot. Uh, I've got some grant monies lined up in place, and obviously, I've got some private funds lined up in place. So realistically, this is probably about an eight to twelve-month project, phase one and phase two, to renovate the property, top to bottom, and then do the excav- excavating and everything that's needed for the green space and the park.
So here, my, um, okay, so as the developer, it makes sense to purchase that house on the back and I saw how the backyard is big, you know what I mean? So it's not adequate, look at what you mean, you know, anybody, it's not an adequate space for the backyard. And I saw that, look behind there, their cars are like, all the way...
And they're, and they're dumping in my backyard too.
Right, so, so it does make sense to purchase that lot, I know what you're saying, as a... However, at the same time, I also talked with the neighbors in the area, and, you know, as, you know, them being one of my neighbors, it really, they said that house has been sitting there for at least seven years. I'm really tired of hearing that, walking out their door and seeing a property, so that's a fair... And then, um, you know, as somebody who, I was living there, I agree that it's just, there's no space in the backyard, whether, you know, coming in and out, that space is little. So my concern really is, you know, how long the house exists. Um, because, you know, across the street, you got all the fine houses up there, and you've got that one property that's sitting there, and I was talking to the manager. So, you know, we're, that's just not...
I totally get your concern. Um, I projected timeline to start construction, it was actually July, um, but I, I wasn't aware that, you know, it was going to be, you know, this long of a process to try to get the adjacent lot. Um, so I kind of got some things on hold. The MEDCs, you know, are kind of on hold, and I've got grant funds that they have an expiration date. Those funds are only available until they're gone. Um, so initially, our plan was to have started construction in July, so, you know, we're a little bit behind. Um, but if we can expedite that process, as far as, you know, eight to ten months, then we absolutely would do so, but I'd rather, you know, underpromise and overdeliver.
You, um, you were, you were on the agenda, someone was on the agenda earlier in the year, right?
Yeah, so what, what happened was, is the company name was sent into another company.
Got you.
Their old money to the city, so it was that hangup, and then some of its properties needed to be reappraised, and that, that didn't happen till after July.
Okay.
So after July, we were able to, um, move it, move it to, uh, workshop, to, uh, bring it forward, council.
Okay, okay.
So, uh, did you change the name? You didn't change, you said it's separate.
No, there was another LLC with the same name as me out in Monroe, Michigan, that had some debt, but it wasn't, it's not me.
And that, and that company, that company actually was dissolved, you know, so we pulled it up, it was actually dissolved, but they didn't handle all that debt, so...
It'll even, it'll differ county to county. LLCs, you can have, you can have ABC LLC in Wayne County, and somebody can have ABC LLC in Oakland County. They put the exact same name.
It was just a mix-up, where...
But, go ahead, though. I, I think that this, this fine, we need the perfect space, it's a green space here, we'd be nice to continue to have grass and lawn, uh, to be gay and dim.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so I would just request that you make sure you put all your permits, as low as you can, that needs to be done in-house, building, electric plumbing, second, as our GSDs need to do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm going to do one thing, because I misspoke earlier when I was having this conversation. On the south side of that white line, that is all the city of Detroit. This property on this side of the white line is the, this is the city of Detroit, correct?
That's weird.
Yeah, but I'm gonna, that is located in the city of Detroit and not in the city of Highland Park, right? So, again, I just wanted to, because I thought this, this whole area, I misspoke. I don't have anything to say about these pieces of property. This is in the city of Detroit. This is across our, the boundary of our city, it's separated by the alley, if I'm not mistaken.
Some of it go right in the middle of the property, yeah.
So that is what I'm seeing here on these half parcels?
Yeah.
So...
Part of it is Detroit, part of it is Highland Park.
Okay, so this is what I would ask you to do out of respect for this gentleman, and then out of respect for our sanity. Have the, uh, title company, make sure that they, when this comes back to us, that they get it straight. I saw the resolution, the resolution is fine. What I don't want is for another person to buy a piece of property in Highland Park and have a portion of that property in the city of Detroit, and then be getting assessed a bill and not know. I just want to make sure that we...
Yeah.
That, that alley situation, just double check, because I'm getting property details not found, that's what is showing up on the screen. That means there's a contested amount of land back there, just so, so look out for them. Had a title company, double check.
I, I had Chemtech perform a survey in January.
Oh, okay, well, you got it. They know exactly where it is? Okay, babe. Yep, yep, don't give, don't, don't take an inch over that. Because you'll get charged for it for seven years, and then they won't want money. Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate your, um... Any, any additional questions? Is there any reason why this can't go back on the agenda?
No, I mean, I'm sorry.
Any, any reason why this item can't go back on one of the next council agendas? Hearing no protests, I assume that we will be ready next time. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, alright.
Uh, the next item we have here is the Safe Streets for All Action Plan. Who's, who's ball is this? MCA? Okay. Uh, we will let you take us through it. I'll do the same thing with the time. I'm using the time to keep us on track. If we get done before that, fantastic. If not, at least it'll have a, help push us in the right direction so that we can finish with the meeting and then move on to the, uh, regular scheduling.
Great, um, good evening, council members and community members.
Good evening.
Thank you for, uh, the opportunity to present this City of Highland Park's Safe Streets and Roads for All, or SS4A action plan. My name is Neha Bono, and I am a project engineer with Metro Consulting Associates, and I'm here today to discuss this critical initiative for the city of Highland Park. Uh, the primary goal of this, uh, action plan is to, to approach Vision Zero by the year 2040. Now, what is Vision Zero is, it is, it is an approach that aims at zero roadway fatalities and, uh, serious injuries on the streets of Highland Park. This action plan was developed under a grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration, and it comes in two types. One is the Action Plan Grant, and the other is Implementation Grant. Now, in order to qualify for an implementation grant, the city is required to have, uh, this safety action plan in place, uh, approved by the Department of Transportation. Um, we received this, uh, Action Plan Grant in the fiscal year 2022, and now with this plan, we're taking, uh, significant steps to enhance the safety on the streets of Highland Park for all its residents. Um, our action plan is built around several key components. Uh, the first of which is leadership and commitment, leadership commitment and goal setting. We have set a target date of 2040 to approach Vision Zero, and this is a goal that requires an official public commitment from the city council, uh, through, uh, the adoption of a resolution. This plan brings together several departments in the city, including the mayor's office, the police department, the Department of Community and Economic Development, Engineering Department, and, uh, the city's consulting firm, Metro Consulting Associates. Uh, now, in order to make Highland Park safe in the future, uh, we need to understand the historical trends and, uh, the current conditions of the traffic safety in the city. Uh, our analysis took data from sources such as SEMCOV, which is the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and TAMC, which is the Transportation Asset Management Council, both of which are, uh, freely available for, uh, you to view on their websites if you, if you need more information. We also got data from a major source, uh, from a software called Roadsoft, which is backed by the Michigan Department of Transportation. And through our analysis of data that we got from 2014 to 2023, we calculated that an average of point seven uh, traffic-related deaths and five-point-one incapacitated, incapacitating injuries occur in Highland Park every year. That is a total of fifty-eight fatalities and severe injuries in the last ten years. Um, the next component of this action plan is community engagement. We wanted to hear from the Highland Park community and get their uh, input in helping us, uh, decide on the proposed improvements. So we published a public survey on the City of Highland Park website, and it was also available in hard copy, uh, for anyone who visits the Water Department Customer Service Center. The survey went live on June 24th and was active until July 31st of this year. Uh, in addition, we also communicated with the police department, highlighting some of the ongoing, uh, programs they have in place, such as the Flock ALPR program or the Blue Light Project, while also considering some equity concerns. Um, to prioritize all these efforts, we have developed what we call a High Injury Network, which is basically a map of all the areas, uh, that have shown, uh, significantly higher concentration of traffic incidents, uh, in the last ten years. We identified, uh, some corridors as critical, uh, such as Hamilton Avenue, Oakland Avenue. We've got Manchester Avenue, Man, sorry, Manchester Parkway, California Street, and there are also some critical intersections, one of which is, um, Second Avenue and Florence Street. Uh, you can refer to the map that is on the presentation copy here. Now, based on all these considerations, we have identified a series of potential projects that, uh, that we aim to start in the next, uh, two years, from 2025 to 2028. These projects are divided into three types of categories, uh, operational, behavioral, and infrastructural. Um, the DPW has been taking, uh, lead on such projects in the past, and we've been assisting them, and the projects follow a similar pattern. Looking at 2025 to 2026 start date, um, one of the first projects we are proposing is traffic sign upgrades. We did an analysis of all the traffic signs in Highland Park last fall and discovered that, uh, almost half of the street, uh, half of the intersections don't have street names, and almost forty-three percent don't have any stop signs. So upgrading the city's traffic, uh, sign infrastructure up to the MMUTCD or Michigan, uh, Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices is extremely crucial. Next, uh, we've got the citywide street striping, which includes, uh, thick pavement markings that can streamline traffic in a safe manner. Uh, this, uh, will be a continuation of another street trapping project that we assisted DPW with a few years ago, uh, where in that project, we completed about twenty percent of the street's road mileage, uh, where we striped. Following that, we have bike lanes, uh, that are being proposed, um, on Hamilton Avenue, uh, since the bike lane project was completed. We've seen in the past two years, we have seen a three percent drop in the fatal and incapacitating crashes. Um, and, but since it's only been a couple of years, we'll continue to monitor that trend to get this project. Uh, moving on to the, moving on to the 2026 to 2027 chart, uh, we're looking at, uh, we're suggesting, uh, some projects like PRX Street Sweeping Program, which the DPW can undertake. Uh, we have some infrastructural programs, uh, like the traffic light improvements at critical intersections that we identified in the High Injury Network. This includes installation of new traffic lights or modernization and re-timing of, uh, the existing ones. Uh, we've also got streetlight, uh, installations, uh, as a proposed project that will refurbish the city's, uh, street lighting conditions. In our safety analysis, we discovered that of all the fatal and severe injury crashes that took place during nighttime, thirty-five percent of them occurred, uh, due to, occurred in areas with inadequate lighting conditions. And then, lastly, moving on to the years 2027 to 2028, uh, as a start, uh, we're proposing projects like one-way streets, similar to how one-way streets are alternated west of Hamilton Avenue. We'll continue to do that, uh, east of Hamilton Avenue, up to Wuer or even Oakland Avenue. And the city, uh, could invest in some speed management and traffic studies, so, so that we can refine our speed limit policies. Posting accurate speed limits, uh, at every juncture on the street is extremely crucial for street safety, street safety. And, uh, lastly, we have, we have, um, traffic circle installations, uh, or roundabout installations at some of the critical intersections that we identified on, uh, the High Injury Network. Some of them are, um, Second Avenue and Manchester Parkway, or Second and Florence, which was the most crucial intersection. And, um, according to a report by the National Cooperative Highway Research Program, or NCHRP, many, uh, studies have found that that the installation of roundabouts is an improvement, uh, in the overall safety performance, uh, in the safety for the street. In conclusion, um, this action plan is a foundation for safer streets and safer communities in the city of Highland Park. We are requesting the council's endorsement of this plan through a formal resolution, which can act as a framework and allow us to apply for the next round of the SS4A Implementation Grant. With your support, we can make Highland Park, uh, safer for all the residents and commuters, uh, that pass through the city. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Tosh, I have to go right ahead.
I'm glad you mentioned bike lanes and the, um, roundabouts. Uh, there was one street that you visited, the recurrent accidents on, and that's right at the corner of Hamilton and...
Hamilton and...
Yes. Constant accidents there. The light pole is constantly here to smack down. It takes them forever, it takes them months with the light that come. Uh, I, I, I've seen several fatal accidents on that corner, so that might be one.
I see, I'm approaching.
We'll, we'll make a note of that.
Okay, and then, yeah, and then the bike lanes. I got no problem with the bike lanes, they're a great idea. I'm just hoping that it be a little bit better than what we currently have. Currently have, it's not working. And while we're on the subject of those bike lanes, maybe you guys want to look at, um, how they laid it out, because right on the corner of Hamilton and Puyallup, they ran a bus lane, right in front of our place of worship, but no buses there. The buses are on Pickens and Puritan. It used to be a bus stop on Midman, right before Hamilton and Puyallup. But they took that bus stop out. You get this on Pickens and Puritan, oh, we have a bus lane here, and nobody can park in front of, that's a steel mark, there's a bus lane and stop. You know, so just a few ideas, right?
Done, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely make a note of that.
Okay, um... Is it, is, is a roundabout possible? At Puritan, and that, is a roundabout possible? I think that would cut out a lot of...
Yes, uh, Puritan and Hamilton, I think the area is pretty big to fit a... Yes, uh, Puritan and Hamilton, I think the area is pretty big to fit a roundabout. But given that Puritan is broken up uh and not exactly, so there, there might be some design elements involved, which the engineering department could
Yeah, yeah, that's very dangerous.
Yes.
Very dangerous. And I need a back counsel person.
Sure, Madam Proton.
Speaking of Hamilton and Puritan. Huge sign. And if you did some kind of reflection, this needs to happen on basis. W, we step down there, but we've got a very huge sign right here. Let's go across. You don't return right over there. So that's like me. That would be the very first thing.
That's when we put those uh those cement blocks up on uh along the wall after that. I remember that. I remember that, yeah.
Uh, they, both of these questions actually addressed the notes that I had. Um, I have seen in the twenty years I've been here, uh more than a dozen myself, and I'm pretty sure there were other accidents that I did not see right there in Puritan and Hamilton. Uh, there used to be houses there when I moved here, but it's my understanding, some of the houses are no longer here because of damage that they suffered on that corner. Um, there used to be a failed tree that was knocked around. There used to be the person who lives there now used to have cars parked. They might even have a trailer. They don't do that anymore. And I don't understand how they, when I say they, I guess I'm talking about us. I don't understand how we um don't have a very tall glow-in-the-dark sign because coming down Puritan, which I have coming from my daughter's school from Mary Grove. I'm coming down Puritan at night. I know there's a turn. I'm driving the speed limit. But if you, if you don't know there's a turn coming and you're not driving the speed limit, you really don't have a chance. Um, so they, they addressed those, those issues perfectly. Uh, one of the other things that I would have wanted to talk about was a comparison of like Ms. Shaw, you said, our bike lanes versus what you see in the city of Detroit. Island View has a set of bike lanes that are on one side of the street. They are protected with a raised curve. You can actually drive a street sweeper through those. So rather than we reinvent the wheel, maybe we should go, I was just in Corktown the other day. Uh, and you could, there's some fantastic examples about what integrated bike lanes could look like. Yeah, so I don't think we, I don't think we should reinvent the wheel. I think we should go find best practices in our neighbors. Uh, and uh if those have been supported by M dot, why would they not be supported here with us? We are a cross-section for so many communities. Uh, I think it'd be a good idea to just go out and get some so win some pictures. So when it comes time, you could show us, you could go to Ferndale, you could go to Corktown, you could go up here. And you could show us, here's what it looks like, and then ask for input. Uh, I ride my bike, but I wouldn't ride my bike down Hamilton just because I don't want to get my bike tore up. And the people that ride their bikes on Hamilton have expensive bikes, have thousand-dollar bikes that look like little, you know, bike spaceships. They still ride through there. You know what they do? They don't ride in the bike lanes. Because you can't, you can't get a um, a sweeper through there.
The old, the old ways of just trying to really have to separate the best traffic or islands. Here's the market, just like design, just to have hang around.
Yeah.
So you get the, you get the communities in our reality, I mean, all of the communities I've seen in the last few years after Hamilton have truly separated.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if, if mainly they have over uh over graduated right away, if you do, you'll get that That was a nice, that's outside, that's a nice try.
Yeah.
Uh, Puritan, that offside intersection, offside intersection, always
I can imagine.
So, you know, I got, I wonder who owns that east side of Hamilton. You couldn't come down and angle, keep, keep yours on the angles for the roundabout, if you have to get that property it's on the east side of Hamilton.
Okay. If, yeah, if the city owned, I mean, that could actually be the idea of around, never even thought about a roundabout. It could. So, so one, some of my neighbors over, I live in this subdivision over here. And a few of the neighbors have suggested roundabouts for John R. Because people come through there at sixty, seventy miles an hour at night. I mean, if it was a hump, it'd be like the old bridge to Bellisle where you went under and up. They come through pretty fast. So we that's a great suggestion for something to try. And then the, as you mentioned, Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti. We have to find out how many people are actually, how much pedestrian traffic do we have on Hamilton? Because we could have this gigantic sidewalk that nobody uses. That we could very easily move the bike lane over to where there's a shared pedestrian space and save us some money. Because real talk, it needs to be four lanes, north and south on Hamilton. I know that, I know that because I know engineers, I know they say when you slow traffic, there's a benefit to the businesses that are on it. I didn't like the transition for Livinoy's all seven years they were working on it. But now that it's there between six and eight mile, it's, 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 it's what you want. Because when you go across that same street, you go nine mile, ten mile into the suburbs, you get that. You get the, the, the Yeah, so however, under today's circumstances, the way people come down Hamilton. That's why, that's why the bike lanes are flat because our cousins and my uncle is not waiting. They just getting over to what they what used to be the right lane and they flooring it. And the only people who pay attention to that painted lines are the bus drivers that come through. Dexter Bus comes up Hamilton, right? That's about the only people that pay attention to it. And you know, the police pay attention to it, but nobody else because it's inconvenient. So that might be, even if we had one and a half lanes, the half lane for passing. Because if it's an official passing lane as opposed to the parking lane. That minimizes, because somebody just might cut the lane and just hit whatever's parked there. Somebody followed the rules once you get down to where the church is, south, uh, what is that, uh, Glendale? People follow the rules. They park, they follow the rules by the methadone clinic. They actually park in the parking spaces. But if you're gonna swerve to the right north of that, that you might swerve to the right south. Just, just, just move with that. This is a great conversation because it's, it's what we need. Ms. Manica, go ahead.
Hi, we were both Mr. Shawpy and Mr. Thomas. Right. They mentioned we all had, seemed like, oh, I'm sorry. And it's Robinson saying points for the bike lanes where uh that Puritan area. Then you came in and I was gonna ask that question, so I guess circular help because of that way it's created. I did have a question though. I noticed that um this was a little this traffic class upgrade, then maybe horrible or mobile signs, so you know what I'm talking about. There.
That wasn't what, what we were thinking. These are, you know, dimensional, uh, just just getting everything signed properly first, but that, I mean, that, if we have streets that we don't, with the speed, I mean, you know those, you know, some bike brands in police department. So that wasn't what the law process was.
Okay. Um, we're thinking of starting from the intersections first because uh traffic control devices uh are lacking.
Okay, Mr. Shapico, I'm sorry, you still going, Ms. Manica?
So, so uh this is three, it's not history. And what, what I want more to give is a long history. I want to be sound or get out, enjoy the city, have fun as the city grows, getting better. Uh, I really don't like the idea of extending traffic. I'm more than looking forward to construit. I like the two remaining, but I will read the council president about third lane being a pass. That's, that's a great idea. We need that third lane to turn uh left or right. When the whole rally, I mean, install, stop somewhere, so that third lane is ideal. But on, on what we're having in Ferndale, they literally, they made a curve for the bike lane. They literally made uh a curve. I mean, it's beautiful, okay? And then um, and then what was done also on Livinoy's. The construction was held for, for the diameter of it, but after it's done, it's very They expanded the sidewalks, gave the districts uh, I mean, the stores, room to do sidewalk campaigns, the dynamic. It looks very nice. So that's something I envision for, for Hamilton as we grow here, a walkable history.
Yeah.
And it cuts down, it cuts down on what I hear late at night, which is the donut boys in the middle of the damn street. It, it, it cuts that down, okay? So I'm looking to construct traffic, okay? Not wrong. Okay, I would say a walkable history.
Right, yeah, this plan um uh, it goes through like a balance between bike uh motorists, bike, bicyclists and pedestrians. So it's, it's safe for every, everybody uh on the street.
Okay. You said something about, uh, I heard you say something about streetlights. Does that mean that we're gonna have more streets in the city? Because some options are very good.
Uh, yeah, that is, that is what we're proposing. We'll have to get with a few other departments and uh design. Sorry, sorry.
No, I was only looking at him because um have you ever here asked me to talk about so that's appropriate application for the section. That's, that's something that they have proposed, and I know that we wrote up some specifications of policy. But it's not according to policies. We are definitely hesitant to, but we can have strictly the part. It is part of a whole, it's a whole thing. It's gotta be safe, I mean, from, protected from vehicles, but it also gotta be lit and compact, so there's a whole, a whole plan.
Well, well, we, we, we restart, but hold on one second. When, when are we expecting to, we have a resolution here in front of us. When was the goal to bring, to get this resolution to council at the next meeting?
Uh, yes, on the
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Shaw, go ahead.
So uh, in, in that plan, in which I'm, uh, is it also included a little piece for the police, you know, one thing I like about Ferndale is they don't have to have uh officers like up and down, what would I have to do? Because when you run that light, shh, that's cameras, they got you.
Yeah.
And, and they mail you that, I've got one, actually, no. Okay, I've got one, okay, so they mail
Yeah, this, this does include the block A L P R program, the automated license plate reader program that the police department have.
That's great.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Manica, I'm gonna leave, bring it over to you and then we'll wrap it up and move on to the last item. Go ahead, ma'am.
Um. Uh, going back to the bike lanes, changing the street, all of that, is maybe looking at, definitely looking at other cities. Um, probably the big bike lanes, but then also I would like to make sure that we take the work. I know um Garrett mentioned, you see the master plan, some of that. So then we are still following the master plan, whether or not the master plan needs to have another look at, time to relook at the master plan because bike lanes might not have been included in that. And this is a different time. So going forward, when we started one thing, we've moved into two thousand and twenty-four. Talking about, I don't remember bike lanes in nineteen, whatever. You know, you, you know what I'm saying? So then we make sure that we covering the master plan. Or is there some things that we need to also add along with this? This is important as we, we attending or upgrading and those were the biggest things, the master plan. Oh, and just because it fit Ferndale and some other places, it might not exactly fit our city. Because of where our city is designed, I'm looking at bike lanes, locations on John R, Rush Street, is that right?
Uh, yeah.
Third Avenue and Second.
Yeah, those are some suggested locations for some of the North Town streets.
They're not, they're not very big uh areas, so in my mind, they might not be great areas for bike lanes. And then Oakland Avenue, we don't have any, so we're putting in some. Right, Oakland doesn't have. So these are the areas to be looking at.
Yes, we would have to look at Oakland based on the uh power zone as well, because you know, you have a lot of that truck traffic
Right.
that's going through there, so we would have to look at that.
So that's what I'm saying, if we look at what our city looks like versus what their city looks like. Uh, when I go to Ferndale, it's where all the time, I'll be honest, I don't like these bike lanes on the road. But I like the other ones. They have some on the street, I run the major parks, but uh, you know, parking and then thinking about who lives here, who lives here, what I think it looks like versus who lives there and what their city already looks like.
That's why I said, that's to read up some, make sense to incorporate that there. Because if that's already the plan, like you said, they, I'm just, today, we're incorporating, they were talking about having to drag slow down. Pull the bar down there and all that, I think, you know, striking, I think it's opportunity to kind of upgrade what we're doing some years ago. When, when we say, look at those
Yeah.
But you, but you look at some ideas, some of those ideas are worth considering, but the application in Highland Park might be different.
Because those streets
Because they just like to come in and just, and I
Those streets that was on there, it doesn't seem like, I want to go to my other point, those, those streets, those streets, it seems small and unlikely to look industrial.
So I, I don't want to interrupt you, but we, we run it into a time crunch. We have one more thing, and I was gonna ask, would you make yourself available for our members to be able to ask you questions between now and the meeting? Where are, we got, yeah, we got, we got ten minutes left to go to do this last item unless it's just not gonna be Is people from McKenna?
Yeah, we, we
Okay, so we gotta make sure that we get McKenna in there too. Try to squeeze it in. Go ahead, we don't, we only have ten minutes left.
And we say period, are we talking about weekly, five weeks, monthly, or you haven't thought about it?
It'll be routine, look like a routine maintenance plan.
Okay, thank you for, sorry for having to rush you out of here, but I want to make sure we get to everybody. So the last item on it would be the proposal to provide planning services from McKenna. Uh, what's your name, sir?
Donovan Smith.
Mr. Smith, thank you for joining us here. I'm sure um our C D director will be joining you as well. Uh, forgive that, like, the last thing that we talked about, our roles and safety, super important, not that you're not, I just want to just remind you, we're on a slight time crunch here, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, so good evening once again, as we talked in the past, last year, the city of Highland Park did issue a R and P to bring in planning services. At that time, it was a grant that the city of Highland Park also applied for, which we did not receive. So, um, but the R and Ps, two people did put this in, it was McKenna and another company and the city had decided to go with McKenna. But when the grant fell through, it stopped. Recently, the uh state treasurer and state land bank said that they would support the effort. So now, that's why we brought it back to the table a couple of meetings ago. And now we have a solid package. We have a draft letter, draft M O U from the state and their presentation. So I wanted to bring it back before the council, before we can, for vote at the next meeting.
Okay, and Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And you are, what is your role at McKenna?
So in McKenna, I'm a principal planner.
Sweet, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the floor is yours. We got about ten minutes. I'll run it all the way up to seven o'clock. If you have questions for the young man. Uh, this is a great time to have it. I'll just say that I was in favor of doing it at the time. Because I know having a planning company is a room full of people. Right now, we got two. So it's a room full of people that have access to all the software. They know the people to pick up the phone, to call. They can provide us with the information that we desperately want. I'm in favor. It's, I'm, I'm turning it over to the body to see if they have additional questions about it. Thank you. Mr. Shawpy, go ahead.
Um, so step, uh, can you quickly give a quick outline as to what your, what, uh, what the team's responsibilities would be uh to the city?
Yes, so uh in this, yes, thank you. So in this proposal, it outlines essentially three scopes of work. Uh, the first would be providing planning services. Uh, so this would be uh when applications come in via for site plan or zoning or uh various planning activities, uh McKenna would step in and provide those services. Uh, guiding those applications through their administrative processes and then ultimately through uh approval or deny, whatever the planning commissioner or the uh community desires. Uh, the planning services would be performance-based. Uh, so as uh John mentioned in the previous meeting. There are no upfront costs to the uh city for that. Uh, we, we are paid out of the application fees, then the duration of two hundred and fifty or whatever that number is based on that application fee. Uh, the city will get those fees, so there's no cost to the city planning services.
Okay, so that would be uh building inspections, right?
That, that would be the uh second part, which would be the actual building department. So it's planning department services, building department services.
So you're gonna come in with your own inspectors?
Yes, yes, so
You're gonna um handle all of the permits?
Yes.
Applications as well, right?
Yes, for planning and building.
Yeah, I was, I was reading very carefully. Um, in, in your contract here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Says, uh, agreement for professional and technical planning advisory service in section eight. Says, uh, we should have a service under section three, or the following review fee should pay by the city of, of, excuse me, of consulting or service rendered. Per section three of this agreement, in accordance with the following schedule. Payments of the following fees shall not be contingent of only city's release of payment for the advocates. Where fees are based on hourly rates of on request, consultants shall provide cost estimates to the city manager or designated for review service prior to committing work. Okay, uh, we don't have a city manager, so I'm wondering if that designated would, it should be counted.
We, we do, would, that's what Ms. Square is?
No, she, she, uh, she's the city administrator.
I stand corrected, you're, you're correct.
It would, it would be to the administration, but the fee schedule would need to be adopted by council.
Okay, okay. Okay, um, is there a way that council could receive the same, uh, same monthly reports as the administration?
Absolutely.
Okay, is that something that can be put into the contract?
It can, if that is the desire, yeah, there's no problem.
That would make me very happy.
Yeah.
We can keep our eye on the ball, just to watch what's going on.
That's totally understandable.
We get a lot better at sharing information, everything is flowing nicely, I like it. Okay, I don't want, on council to be at the last thing, finding out something at the last second.
We, we do provide, uh, monthly reports, uh, in terms of our reviews, or the, or any applications we completed, so we can put that information in that monthly report, yes.
Our council president, I yield back.
Okay, we have about five minutes left before the end of the evening, Ms. Manica, go ahead, jump in.
Uh, we take care of our hourly street, maybe. I mean, hourly for street vacations.
Right, but it goes to the planning commission.
Additional questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, I see something right here, we're gonna talk about the private life.
It, it might be mentioned, so, uh, as it relates to certain programming in your building department. So what that line is referring to is if there is a desire of that community to create or utilize light programs, we would be able to administer or facilitate those types of programs through the building department. Through the building department. Yes, so that would be, you know, demolishing homes or, uh, code enforcement, those types of process that address, uh, potential lighting problems. Residential, both would fall under the purview of the building department.
With special attention to aggressive folks who are threatened, close to, and living on light with people.
So the direct would come from, uh, the community itself, if they want us to do specific actions around lighted properties. Otherwise, we would be following the city's current processes for addressing light or damaged buildings, problem properties, things like that.
But this is coming from the community, residents?
Yes, or, or staff, or.
Or.
You, staff, yeah.
Please forgive the delay, we had a productive workshop. Couple minutes, well worth it. It's my pleasure to call to order the Highland Park City Council in person and virtual regular meeting scheduled for today, Tuesday, September 3rd at 7:00 PM, it is now 7:09 PM. Madam Clerk? Would you please call to roll, ma'am?
Counselwoman Martin, here. Counselwoman Manica, here. Counselwoman Protem Robinson, present. Counsel President, on.
Here, thank you very much. Can we get a motion on the approval of tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with amendment.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with an amendment, could you please state that amendment for the record, ma'am?
I would like under community development, which is number seven. Resolution for the bill plug-in and just to try and charge equity project move to workshop.
Okay, the city attorney had some information related to item seven. And I believe it's, there's a time deadline, people ahead and I'll allow you to explain.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have communication with Director Clyburn, he indicated to me that the resolution is just to apply for the grant. So in the event that there is an award, then the acceptance of those monies would be back before this honorable body for determination, so my understanding is that the community development department would be desirous for council to go ahead and just approve them being able to apply for the grant.
Okay. Yeah, having heard that, Madam Protem, does your motion remain the same? Okay. On the item, so it's, we have a motion on the floor from Council Protem Robinson, it was supported by Councilman Ashafi, she has made the suggestion that we approve the agenda but remove item seven, the city attorney has explained to us. Is there, is there a time delay related to this, are we gonna miss something by not applying for it? Council, I mean Director Clyburn, is there some issue, are we gonna lose time by not applying, by not applying now, will we miss this opportunity?
Yes.
Okay, so having said that, the issue is that if we don't apply now, we could miss the opportunity to even approach this grant, is there a particular reason why you wanted to have this removed?
We don't know anything about it. So again, he wants to vote on something that we know nothing about. And it should be moved to a workshop.
What's the deadline to apply? Yes, sir, what's the end of the week? Your, your kid. So again, the, the issue here is that we are, if we don't apply for it, we can't receive it, we can't get it, so you're saying don't apply for it. Is that, is that the motion that's on the floor for the approval of this? But if, if, if the next workshop, the soonest workshop that we could have would be two weeks from now and the application day would have passed. I, I, I work in even, I can't do any special meetings anymore, for a while. So, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we, if we miss this opportunity, I don't know much of this is for an EV charging equity program, if you would?
No, it, it appears, thank you, Mr. President, it appears from the resolution that it would be estimated for the city to receive between $700,000 and $1 million and cover procurement and installation of EV charging stations. That would be eight level two AC types and two DC fast charging types.
Again, so we, this is a matter of whether or not we even apply for funds, you're saying if we approve the agenda as it is, that means we don't even get to apply for the funds, Miss Manica, go ahead.
So, could we, this is a suggestion. Leave it on the agenda, and then during the agenda, it can always still be moved to workshop if needed, but at least in the agenda, if it stays on that agenda. And it gets actually come forth and say before TV, the supervisor and, or whoever else needs to talk about this grant, to give some explanation to why, one, yes, it's just not paying for us, and two, the importance of it, or what, just give us some information. So it doesn't have to be necessarily removed from the agenda, but during the agenda, it could then also be moved to a workshop.
I, I still keep looking at, thank you for that point, because it's a very valid point. If we, if the, if the application deadline, I've never heard of this before among this group ever, that we just said, no, we're not gonna apply for this grant. As much as we need grants, I, I can't imagine a scenario by, by which we have to apply, we still have to apply with the rest of the community for the grant, but we're saying, we're not even gonna apply for it, and this is for EV charging. This is for a, a EV charging station in Highland Park on the top of the hill in the middle of the city. I'm just saying, this is where we're located, we're centrally located, no. We are, Highland Park is up on top of the hill, right.
I don't know if all of us would say no to it, but versus just taking it off right now and not hearing it. We can always hear it in the agenda during the meeting and then still move it if, if that was through, uh, Protem's request, then move it to a workshop, I understand the timeline. But I'm just trying, I am trying to keep it on the agenda to at least hear about it and, and find out if, yeah, maybe it's something we can just wait and apply for it again later in another day.
We still have oversight, and I don't want to, if, if we picked our packets up Thursday, okay, 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 I get what you're, I get what you're saying, I get exactly what you're saying. No, the workshop agenda should have come to us a couple of weeks ago, but to your point, so here's, here's where we are right now. The motion is on the floor to approve the agenda with amendments. It, it'll take three of us to approve the agenda with the amendments, if we don't approve it, we could entertain another motion and approve the agenda, but we have Madam Protem's motion that's on the floor, she was supported by Mr. Al Shafi, so the question now is, are we in agreement with the motion that's on the floor, and I will ask for the calling of the roll, if we're not in agreement with the motion that's on the floor, the vote will reflect that. I, I would have liked for us to agree on it, but let's go ahead and call to roll. The motion on the floor is that we approve the agenda with an amendment that removes item seven from the agenda. If that item is removed, we can't submit for it, and that's what the motion on the floor has been supported by Mr. Al Shafi. Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll on the motion that has been made on the floor?
Counselwoman Ashafi?
Yes, for me.
Yes, to revoke?
Yes.
Counselwoman Martin? No. Counselwoman Manica? No. Counselwoman Robinson? Yes. Counsel President, on.
No, our motion fails, the chair would, yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President, as to item five, I just wanted to make sure that.
Okay, so I read the resolution, I saw the correction, we good?
Okay, in case there are any questions, because I know.
Okay, so let's go back to the approval of the agenda, right now, the chair needs to entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. Is someone be willing to make a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve with questions, Counsel President.
Okay, do we have support? We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as is, with questions from Mr. Al Shafi, who was supported by Councilwoman Manica. Go ahead with your questions, sir.
Okay, to the attorney, is there a reason why I'm looking at a different, different, different resolution than the one that's already in my package ahead of time?
Uh, yes, yes, so councilman. Thank you, Mr. President. I did send a corrected resolution that had a change to the therefore be it resolved paragraph, that would just indicate that the council would be appointing within 30 days rather than having a, a blank line for somebody. So that would be the only change, I did send that in an email last week.
He sent it on, on Wednesday.
I sent it on Wednesday, and in the event that everybody didn't see it via email, I wanted, I brought hard copies, and left those at your chairs after the workshop this evening.
Okay, well, maybe it didn't come through to me, Mr. Robinson, because I definitely don't have any email.
It, it would have been Wednesday, maybe an hour or so. It might have been mid-afternoon. It was shortly after.
Share my screen, and this is this is the email here that Mr. Boston sent, this is on Wednesday, 8:28 at 3:36 PM. This is the updated resolution. I sent an email out about a blank line, as opposed to allowing that to come in here with a blank line. This allows us to, this came out at 3:36 PM on Wednesday, this is from Mr. Boston, yeah?
Can you, can you show the, the link of everybody that the email was sent to, because I didn't get to see it.
Here it is, right here, it says, all these different people. That's you, that's Ms. Robinson, that's Ms. Martin. That's Ms. Manica, it also copied, went to the clerk.
Okay.
All right?
All right, I'm good with it.
Okay. All right, so with that, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda, any additional questions?
With change in the resolution of section five.
Yes, ma'am. So there was a motion on the floor for the approval of the agenda that came from Mr. Al Shafi. His concern was with item five, the resolution regarding the reappointment of the vacant city treasurer position, he had questions about the updated resolution that we were just recently received. Support for that motion was made by Councilwoman Manica, so we'll go ahead and take a vote. Call to roll on the approval of the agenda, if you would, Madam Clerk?
Counselwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Counselwoman Martin? Yes. Counselwoman Manica? Yes. Counselwoman Protem Robinson? No. Counsel President, on.
Yes, motion carries, moving on to item four, this is the approval of the proposed minutes for the virtual in-person workshop on the 19th. And the proposed minutes for the virtual in-person regular meeting on the 19th, City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the proposed minutes of the virtual and in-person workshop meeting August 19th, 2024.
Chair will offer a second. Any questions, concerns, dissent? Madam Clerk, would you call to roll on the approval of the virtual in-person workshop?
Counselwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Counselwoman Martin? Yes. Counselwoman Manica? Yes. Counselwoman Protem Robinson? No. Counsel President, on.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to under item four, again, approval of the proposed minutes for the virtual in-person regular meeting for August 19th.
I move to approve the proposed minutes of the virtual and in-person regular meeting for August 19th, 2024.
Chair offers a second. Questions, concerns? Would you call to roll, please?
Counselwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Counselwoman Martin? Yes. Counselwoman Manica? Yes. Counselwoman Protem Robinson? Counselwoman Protem Robinson? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Yes. Counsel President, on.
Yes, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, the mayor will not be joining us tonight. She has reached out to me to let me know that she will not need her time tonight for to address council, so we can move into citizens' participation on the agenda items, that is item five. Resolution regarding the reappointment of the vacant city treasurer, item six, under the clerk, resolution to establish polling locations and election workers pay for the upcoming election. Item seven, under community development, the resolution for the submission of the plug-in of Michigan Tri-County EV charging equity project. Eight, Department of Engineering, a resolution for the resubmitment of vacant documents for the means. Highland Park LLC Hamilton Corridor project, and for number nine, under the Department of Public Works, resolution to terminate contract of cone elevator, do we have anyone that would like to address agenda items? Thank you, come to the podium, ma'am, I will get the time together, I will wait until you allow me to get your name. And then, we will go from there. Okay, ma'am, go right ahead.
Good evening, Council, my name is Lisa Stelarsky, I'm in the third district. And I want to inform you that the Office of Treasurer is not vacated. Since March 18th, the administration has prevented me from taking office. Some months ago, I found accounting errors in the revised water department budget totaling roughly $2 million. In pointing this out, pointing out this collection of errors, I was met with hostility by some members of the administration. I was not intimidated, and I continued to point out errors when I see them. The administration would like you to believe that since I cannot get a $2 million bond, an amount that the agent has called unprecedented in an individual context. It somehow disqualifies, disqualifies me from the treasurer's job. Bond offers I have presented for $500,000 and for $1 million have been rejected by the administration. The real issue affecting the stability of the city coffers is the fact that nobody at City Hall other than me has been asked to be bonded for any amount. A bond ensures personal accountability on the part of public officers. It protects taxpayers against financial losses due to fraud and incompetence. Most cities use blanket bonds for all staff who handle money because many positions require moving large sums of money. Our city will not be more or less vulnerable if I have a $1 million bond or a $2 million bond. Our city is vulnerable because nobody else at City Hall is bonded. I urge councils pass a resolution this evening requiring the administration to seek a blanket bond covering all city office holders, including those in the treasury. I will then happily take my post, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Greetings, everybody, my name is Mark Price, I'm a precinct delegate and I'm a member of the school board. My concern is number five. I would, in my humble opinion, I would suggest for the council to keep Miss Lisa as a city treasurer because she's opposing the election, and I feel like she's like the only qualified person to be in this position, to my understanding. And so that's my humble opinion about that, thank you, Council.
Any additional comments on the agenda?
Hi. Um, my name is Brian Donovan. And I'm also commenting about the reappointment of the treasurer. So I, I've known Lisa Stelarsky now for 12 years. And I, I married her in 2015, shortly after moving to Highland Park and starting a business together. Lisa taught me how to make accurate financial projections and market analyses to help clients decide if their business propositions were viable as part of our business. Lisa is trustworthy, she follows the rules. You can count on her to say something when something doesn't look right in any budget or financial report. She also listens well and is willing to say when things are actually all right, even though they may have looked bad. Lisa's name came up as a candidate for interim treasurer, not because she put it forward, but because council members had asked her for information, and she had downloaded, read, and prepared reports on the last 10 years of audited financial statements for the city of Highland Park. She developed charts and graphs and shared them with the council members who were asking for her help to help them understand what's been happening at the city. Before Lisa was appointed, I asked Tony Lampkin, the deputy treasurer, how much his bond was for. And he told me he was bonded for $500,000. Later, the clerk from the dais confirmed that there's no bond on file for the treasurer that protects the city. Now, on April 25th, 2024, Lisa secured a bond for $500,000 from Bonding Solutions LLC. And when council resolved to reduce the amount of the bond required, that was vetoed. On May 28th, Lisa secured a $1 million bond. The cost of that bond was $911, including the commission for the agent. This was submitted to the city attorney with a resolution to accept the amount. And neither the resolution nor the bond were ever put on the council agenda for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, any additional citizens that would like to be heard?
Good evening, Council, in Highland Park, I would also like to speak in favor of Mrs. Stelarsky, I've known her for two years. And I know that she knows her way, not only around numbers, but also just the bigger picture, she's helped me piece together some, what do we call those? Those maps? Sanborn map, she's helped me, we've gone down to the public. We've gone down to the public library, Coleman A. Young, City Hall, to just kind of see what makes up Highland Park, I think she's a great person, and I think that there's absolutely no reason why she shouldn't be working as we speak, so with that, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry? Did you, could you give us your name again, sir?
My name is Joshua Lemire, proprietor of City of Trees 501 C3, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, my name is Marsha Florence, I'm the producer and host of a television show here in Michigan called Just As, we are an education and resource program dedicated to serving the disabled, the elderly, and their caregivers. I came today to ask council to consider the residents of Highland Park joining us for our fourth annual health and fun fair event. This event has been going on for the last four years in the downtown Eastern Market District. We have the support of the council from River Ridge and E Course and Hamtramck. So we wonder why, when we go from place to place, we heard residents say they were not able to attend these events because they didn't have transportation. Just along the road down here, we went to a couple of facilities, and they gave back the flyers saying, we can't get there. So we'd be honored to have the residents from River Ridge come and join, Highland Park, come and join us on October 3rd. It's a free event with 50 healthcare professional services. Any agencies from here, they would like a booth, we will honor and give you the booth because we know that if we bring people together, the resources are shared amongst everyone. In return, we do have a segment on our show called, what does your city officials do? We would like to ask city officials from Highland Park to come and join us to spread the information and the resources, what you guys do here, so everyone will be accounted for for what they do. If you have any information, I'd like to leave this poster, as well give out some information about the flyers, thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see anybody else moving, oh, if you're moving. Once you stop moving, I'm getting to the agenda, so is this, this is about an agenda item? Okay, come on through. Go for it. Will you state your name for the record, sir?
B. Anthony Holly.
Okay, and what, what agenda item is this about?
This will be about agenda item number five.
Five.
Again, my name is B. Anthony Holly, I am a entrepreneur, community organizer, and a resident of Highland Park for
Thank you.
almost a decade now. Eight years in county, and I wanted to speak on item number five about the, the treasurer. And I just want to say I've known Lisa Stelarsky over a decade. And I wanted to speak to three points that I feel like are really important. One, competence and demonstrated skill, I've worked with Lisa as a part of a couple of different organizations, one that we co-founded that did technical assistance where she was very skilled at creating market studies, feasibility studies, preparing documents. The organization wouldn't have been able to function without her, and to say that that's something that we consistently relied on her for. And organizations still do. And two, trustworthiness and transparency, that is something that the people of Highland Park are in need of and are demanding from this, this amazing body and the administration. And that is something that has been demonstrated here as well through her experience. The third and last one is The third and last one is that representation from Highland Park matters, and Highland Park, Highland Parkers are not lining up for this position. This position is a lot of, as you know, thankless, hard work, and we have somebody that is qualified and willing to, and doing our best to jump through all of the hoops and challenges in order to represent Highland Park and get us on the right track. So definitely want to make sure that this body is doing everything that they can to support her for a better Highland Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional people to speak on the agenda?
My name is Veronica Brooks. I'm speaking about item seven about the charging stations. And when y'all mentioned them and was a little leery about them, I Googled it, and the closest charging station is two miles from here, but it only has two spots. So I think that we should consider it, especially if we can put it in a lit, well-lit, safe area. So I think the people like from Boston Edison, New Center, the University District, and as well as Palmer Park area would mind coming if we have it in a lit self-space.
Thank you. Anything else? Are we ready to move into the agenda? Okay, seeing no additional people at the podium, we want to thank you for the comments that you made and citizens' participation. I'm sure we were all listening. And we will move into item five, which is a resolution regarding the reappointment of the vacant treasurer position. City Council, what is your pleasure? How are we acting on item five?
I move to approve the resolution regarding the reappointment of the vacant city treasurer.
Chair office support with questions? So. Um, yeah. I remember when this issue first came to city council, and I suggested that we wait. I said, can we wait to twenty one days? Can we find out any additional information that will be useful to us as laypeople, as novice, as to what the qualifications are for a treasurer? What does it look like? So I just typed it into AI right now. This is what AI says about requirements for a city treasurer in Michigan. They include a degree in finance or business or public administration or related field. We knew at the time that the former treasurer, above all things, was extremely competent, and she was bonded for millions of dollars. Need I remind you that we had this treasurer during all of the financial hardships that this city has faced? We have been on the verge of bankruptcy for years. So the treasurer had a litmus test. That treasurer had to be bonded. For all you people know, sitting in a room, I could be bonded for five million dollars, and it's none of your business based on how much money I handle as a real estate developer. You don't have to disclose that. You can't make statements that people in the city of Highland Park are not bonded because I'm sitting here in this chair, and I know that there are people who are bonded in this building. It's not my job or none of my business to tell you who they are and what they're bonded for. They're bonded based on the amount of money that they handle. Second thing is experience, some experience in public administration, finance, or business office setting, including supervisory experience. You're going to be a treasurer in the state of Michigan. Think Saginaw, Benton Harbor, E Course, River Rouge, all of these poor black cities like Highland Park that have faced financial challenges. What qualifications do their city treasurer have? What qualifications do they have? How much are they bonded for those cities that have been in bankruptcy jeopardy for years? You also have to have certification. The Michigan Certified Professional Treasurers, MICPT certification, is available to MMTA members who have completed the basic institute to have three years of treasury-related municipal experience. Again, I put in AI qualifications for being a treasurer in the state of Michigan. The certification must be renewed every four years. This is not what I say. This is what the robot, I just typed this in there. This is a very contentious issue. It costs the city a lot of time. The county could have been in here administering our treasury right now. This is the collection of your taxes. We could have had the deputy treasurer, who is competent, who's been in that office for years. He is adjunct to the treasurer. He even had to be bonded for half a million dollars. He's not responsible, but he had to be bonded for a half a million dollars. What does that tell you about working in a treasury office? Everybody don't get to do it. Everybody doesn't get to do it. There are people in this building who are bonded. There are people here who have master's degrees in finance. To just assume that, you know, if I just walk through the door and assume I know something about how to fix a sink, that I'm a certified plumber, that's not fair. It's not. It's not. It's not. It's just not. The Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association offers a basic institute, which provides a hundred-hour introduction to municipal treasury. I didn't hear anything about anybody enrolling in this or taking this class. Nothing. So I have questions. Why are we making it seem as if we didn't do our job as a city? The city council asked the city council members against the recommendation of at least two of us, against the recommendation of the legal department, said, this is what we want to do. And because it was a majority vote, they were allowed to do so. As a stopgap, they said, okay, you at least have to be bonded to the level that the previous treasurer was bonded at. Minimum two million dollars for a city to handle twelve million dollars. You can't get a, you can't get insurance on a hundred thousand dollar car. You can't get a ten thousand dollar policy on a hundred thousand dollar car. You can't get a two million dollar bond when you handle twelve million dollars a year in finance. It's a, it's to cover the people whose funds you are having access to. It should be at par. You can't go out and buy a new Chevy, can't go buy a new Silverado F-150 that's worth fifty thousand dollars and get a twelve thousand dollar insurance policy. You just can't do it. You just can't. You just can't. You can't have a hundred thousand dollar house with a ten thousand dollar insurance policy. They just won't let you do it. You can't be over sixty-five with heart conditions and get the lowest rung of the healthcare insurance plan and not have any out-of-pocket expenses. You just can't do it. You just can't do it. So when I listen to peoples in passing, please, we did what we were supposed to do. This council did not agree on the outcome for that vote, but we did agree on the fact that the person should have a bond, at minimum, ten percent of what the city covers, ten percent. So we didn't agree. We didn't like the outcome, but we made a floor of two million dollars, which is reasonable, in my opinion. Those are my only statements. Anybody else would like to offer to it? Otherwise, we can just call for the vote, and I will read the resolution. We have any additional comments, concerns? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said I would like to say one thing.
Help yourself, sir.
We are two months out from the general election. And you will all have an opportunity to decide who will be your treasurer.
Even, yes, ma'am, but even with that, the treasurer still has to be bonded for a minimum of two million dollars. There's no way we're going to have a ten million dollar rotating tax bill. It's just not possible. The state of Michigan will not allow us, in financial jeopardy, one foot out of receivership to have a treasurer that is not properly bonded. It's just not going to do it. It's just not going to do it. This resolution says, resolution regarding the reappointment of the vacant city treasurer position. Whereas Lisa Stelarsky was appointed to serve as the city of Highland Park treasurer by the Honorable Counsel via a resolution made on March eighteen, twenty twenty four. And whereas the March eighteen, twenty twenty four resolution appointing Lisa Stelarsky stated that the appointment was conditional upon passing a background check and being bonded by the city of Highland Park and the County of Wayne. Whereas the amount required bond was set in the March eighteen, twenty twenty four resolution at a value of two million dollars pursuant to the charter, section four dash eight. Whereas the March eighteenth, twenty twenty four resolution specifically directed the treasurer to undertake all necessary actions to secure the fixed bond prior to assuming any duties as treasurer of the city of Highland Park. And whereas Lisa Stelarsky has not acquired a two million dollar bond since March eighteen, twenty twenty four. And whereas Lisa Stelarsky has not been bonded by the County of Wayne since March eighteen, twenty twenty four. Whereas the city of Highland Park Charter in section four dash ten, subsection nine, states that the city has the city office becomes vacant when there is a failure to file the bond required for the office as required by law, the charter or city ordinance. And whereas the city of Highland Park treasurer position is now vacant pursuant to the charter, section four dash ten, subsection nine. Now therefore be resolved that the Highland Park City Council shall appoint another individual to the vacated position within thirty days pursuant to the Highland Park City Charter, section four dash one, three. Ladies and gentlemen, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on item five?
Councilman Shockey?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilprotestant Robinson?
No.
Council president?
Yes, motion failed. So this resolution does not pass. It doesn't pass, and it still doesn't change anything, unfortunately. Mr. Stelarsky doesn't have her bond, and we don't have a treasurer. So that means the County of Wayne is likely to intercede in our affairs, which providing this coverage, who knows? It may be a good thing. Moving on to the next item. Moving on to item six under the clerk, it's the resolution to establish polling locations and election workers pay for the November fifth, twenty twenty four election. City Council, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the resolution to establish polling locations and election workers pay for the November fifth, two thousand twenty four election.
Chair office, second. Questions, concerns, dissent?
Yeah, here it is right here. Yeah, they got this. Okay. I got questions, Council President.
Go right here.
Okay, so, um.
All these questions will be directed towards the clerk's office.
Okay. Madam Clerk. How do we do in the primary? Because I understand that our systems went down, and Highland Park and all six of its precincts were unable to be counted for quite some time.
Sorry, councilman. I can't.
I'm sorry. I said, I said, how do we do in the primary that just passed? Because of my understanding, according to Wayne County, our systems went down, and all six precincts were unable to be accounted for in the primary for quite some time. Have we fixed that problem?
That wasn't on the part of the city. That was the county.
Okay. Okay, the county says differently, but okay, if it was a county issue, that's fine. So are we all set to go then? Has the glitch been fixed?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Anytime there's an issue, we immediately ask the fag. They come to town and take care of it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Ms. Martin, let's see your hand.
I'm sorry. If there's an issue, and that's the county's problem versus our fault, does our vote get counted? Votes automatically counted, yes, ma'am. It's just that all communities have to send their results to the county so they can add them up, come on, for each city. The votes are counted. Your vote is counted as soon as you put your ballot in the tabulator.
Okay, so we are at item six. It's the resolution to establish polling locations and election workers pay for the November fifth, twenty twenty four presidential election. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Shockey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilprotestant Robinson?
No.
Council president?
Yes, okay. Presidential election. Okay, cool. Item seven, under Community Development Resolution for the Submittal of a Plug-In, a Tri-County EV Charging Equity Project Grant. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the resolution for the submittal of plug-in, a Michigan Tri-County EV Charging Equity Project.
Chair office, support. Questions, concerns? You take this, take it out on the floor.
Council president?
Go right ahead, sir.
So this is just to submit the application if it goes anywhere. Okay, and then if it does go somewhere, it ends up be brought back to council to vote on it, accepted or not, correct?
We good? Yeah, that's okay. And they, I believe they stated that earlier, but I'm glad you asked them to state it on the record. That's just, I mean, not, no grants, and correct me if I'm wrong, no grants, no funds, nothing that comes into the city can come into the city without first being approved to be received by city council, correct? Okay, so all funds have to come to us for approval.
Okay.
Any more questions, concerns? Okay, so could you take the roll on item seven? This is a resolution for the submittal of the plug-in. We have a Ms. Manica made a motion for it, and I offered a second.
Councilman Shockey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilprotestant Robinson?
No.
Council president?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item eight, under Department of Engineering, this is a resolution for the submittal of a vacation document for the Means Highland Park LLC corridor project. And by vacation document, we mean they're vacating some parcels here. City Council, what is your pleasure on item eight, under Department of Engineering?
I move
Any questions?
I move to approve the resolution for some recent metals of vacation documents for the Means Highland Park LLC Hamilton Corridor Project.
Ms. Shockey, did I assume that you were seconding with questions?
Yeah. Support requests, council.
Go right ahead.
Okay, um. I thought we took care of this.
Yes, yes, yes. So we did. We did take care of it. But the surveyor came to us and said, we made an error in the legal description.
Okay.
So we said, okay, well, we can't, you can't just edit it without us going back to council and acknowledging that they made a change. There are no new property, no rezoning, none of that. It was literally
This is the greenhouse that just got tore down.
Yes.
We already vacated the street, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So it was error, it was error in the legal description.
And I was going to say, if you
We've been through this.
That will be right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you don't fix that, somebody can contest it. Be one word. They can contest the whole thing.
So we had to make sure it was able to go through and not be an error. They brought to our attention.
You have a brave soul, man. You come here and say we made a mistake. You're right.
We said we got to, look, we'll take your edit, but we need to come back to, but we're not asking for new action. We're not, we're not changing anything. That's all done and finished.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett, for doing that, because I know, you know, you never know. And I will say my colleagues will hold you to task if anything is wrong. The fact that you found the error and came back and said, you know what, let's just approve this with that small change, hats off to you. We, we already approved it, but the legal description, the legalese, the documents that are submitted down at the county and at the assessor, if there's even one word wrong, it, it affects our document, even one word. Yes, even one word.
Right, but so this resolution said
They corrected the word and they're resubmitting it to us. Not, they can't, they're not going, they didn't turn it in and get a stamp with an error on it. It's like, you know, you turn in a paper, you could turn it in with the word spell wrong or not. So they turned it in with the, and the professor was like, take this paper back, make this correction, and resubmit it. Am I, is that an accurate assessment of what I'm saying? Okay. They haven't, no, it's resubmittal. They corrected the document that they brought to us and brought us a new document that was correct. Resubmittal. They couldn't submit it with an error. You can't legally submit it with an error. You can't give it to the final entity with an error in it without resubmitting it to us first to have it entered in properly. Tell me if I'm saying that wrong.
No, you're right.
Okay.
Is, is, she's saying, is sematical, the semantics, and she's saying instead of the council approval link down here, she's just saying, she should say it's an administrative, not a redo. I think that's what she's trying to, is that, is that what you're trying to say?
Is, I mean, is that, is that, if it's doable, we should include it. If it's, if that's
I mean, but we, I mean, we're kind of beyond that, because what really should, what she's really saying is the resolution should be slightly different. It's already gone through. We can't undo the resolution.
Okay, all right.
But she's saying it should have just said it's administrative change and been a little bit more more, a better explanation of what
Yeah, okay, just on the motion. Okay, 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 I get it, I get it, I get it. Councilprotestant?
I don't care. Just make sure that the ministry reflects what just happened. I don't care, maybe just make sure that the ministry reflects what just happened to the area. So as far as what Ms. Martin is trying to get us to do on the resolution and make sure that the ministry.
Well, we. Is our, our minutes, the, the decorum in the room is recorded on Zoom. We, the only thing that the clerk is doing is what we voted on. Did we vote yes or no? But to your point, we actually have a physical record of what we're saying right here, right now. It's recorded in the public record via Zoom. These are the actual tracks. Yeah, okay, so, um, on item seven, the resolution for the resubmittal and vacation documents of the Means Highland Park LLC, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica, supported by Councilman Shafi. Could you call the roll on item eight?
Councilman Shafi?
Yes, for the correction.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes, for the correction.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilproton Robinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Council President?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item nine, the Public Works Resolution to Terminate the Contract of Cone Elevator. City Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor made by Councilman O'Shafi. Do we have support? Okay, Proton, office support, with questions, go right ahead, Madam Proton.
Why?
Could someone address that? Uh, hold on a second, let me look and see who we have online. We have panelists, we have Mr. Burgess, could you answer that question for us?
Yes, what is the question again?
The question is, why are we terminated the contract of Cone Elevator?
Okay. Uh, we came about getting a contract with Cone. Uh, we had a contract with a Detroit elevator that was signed in nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, they went out of business. They sold their business to Cone. Uh, and Cone is still holding the city liable as an ongoing active contract.
Seriously?
We have had poor service. We have had poor service from Cone, from Cone, uh, and their cost is extremely high.
One second, Mr., one second, Mr. Burgess. Have y'all heard enough?
No, I do have.
Okay, keep going.
Mr. Burgess, are we considering anybody else?
Yes. Uh, we have had to, uh, on occasions. On occasions, we have had to call in, uh, elevator, uh, solutions. They have done an excellent job for us when, uh, when Cone wouldn't come and make our elevator operative. So we have one. I'll be back to this group in a couple of months with a formal, uh, RFP to go out and solicit for, uh, elevator repair.
Additional questions?
Yeah, I don't have a problem at all, yeah, because every time I get in that elevator, I pray to Jesus, I come out. Every time I get in, I pray I come out of it fine, so.
Okay, Ms. Man, a proton?
This question will be. By terminating the contract.
Uh, Mr. President, um, if we need a thirty day notice of intention to terminate. So this would make the city in compliance with its thirty day period. Uh, is that correct, Mr. Burgess?
Yes, that's correct.
The sufficient amount? Okay, let's call the roll on it. Item nine, I'm sorry, this is, um, yes, item nine of the Department of Public Works Resolution to Terminate the Contract with Cone Elevator. Madam, if you will call the roll?
Councilman Shafi?
Yes, to terminate.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilproton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President?
Thomas. Yes, motion carries. Alright, we'll move over into citizens' participation. Um, earlier, I ran the clock at two minutes and thirty seconds. We're before eight o'clock. We're trying to, um, match our record from last week, so. I'll set it for two, two minutes. Do we have anybody that wants to address? Now, y'all can let us go home early if you want. Okay, I'm just messing with you, Ms. Ford.
Good evening, council, citizens, audience. I have a question and I don't know who to direct it to. We had a wonderful event, third seed at Barbara, the back to school event. And I was wondering, who do I see about getting speed bumps put on that street? So I'm not sure who I addressed it to. On Buna Vista, because it is a school, and you know, we have seen, I have seen parents go and go around that loop kind of fast, and I was wondering, who do I speak to about speed bumps? Traffic Commission?
Traffic Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Additional citizens?
Counsel. Uh, B. Anthony Holly, again. I, um, just wanted to give an update. I have come to this body three times now about the, um, the issue at my property at two nine two Mon Street. And I have recently, the last time I came here was ninety days, um, and I still have had no update. I did speak with, um, Captain. McMahon, and who gave me a verbal admission that the city was responsible and then coordinated with, um, planning and development or Public Works to board up the, board up my property after the, the crew cleaning, attempting to clean up a lot. And knocked a ten square foot hole in the property, making it unsafe to be inhabited and a risk. Uh, I still have had no communications, even though the mayor is fully aware, and so, uh, so is the police department. And, um, as I mentioned last time, these are the types of opportunities that the city has so that we don't have to be forced into litigation, but my hands are tied. So I just wanted that on public record, that I, being a responsible resident, did everything I could do to prevent this from happening, and it's very unfortunate. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Okay, that podium is empty, and I'm gonna take that as a cue to move on into council affairs. Uh, wait, wait, I'm sorry. I'll have someone online as well. I have Ms., okay, come on in, ma'am, and I'm gonna have you, and I also have Ms. Turner Johnson, whose hand is raised online.
Thank you.
I'm gonna start with you, and your name, ma'am?
My name is Laverne Swint. I live at two one five California Street.
Okay.
I spoke to, thank you. I spoke to Mayor McDonald, uh, recently, uh, about, uh, two separate things. Uh. The California Block Club President, Mrs. Lisa Butler, lives next door. She told me that she spoke to Mayor McDonald regarding having street lights put on California and the speed bumps because at the end of Oakland and California, it are the Oakland Industrial Center. And they speed down California when they're late for work and they will run you over. So she said, so Mayor McDonald's response to me was, we do not have the money in the budget. That's, uh, A and B. One, the street lights. Uh. A, A was the street lights, B was, uh, speed bumps. Now, a whole nother issue. Um, for quite some time, my daughter had been watching, uh, the cannabis, uh, if the licensing was gonna go forth. So she said to me, how is it that Save-A-Lot, someone told her Save-A-Lot is growing marijuana there, and then someone bought Victor Bakery, and it's now a cannabis business. She said, when was it put to the public that the licensing for cannabis businesses was available to the public? Okay, so how are they in business? And this is the city of Highland Park.
They're, they're operating on probably under state controls, not the city control. We don't have an ordinance, so it's. Huh? Yeah, there, there's, they have signage, but there's no business operating out of there. Any other places in the state, I'm sorry, any other places in our area, I believe, are under the jurisdiction of the state and.
So she needs to do her research as far as getting a license through the state of Michigan.
I can't, we don't, we don't have any, any information to help with that, but that's who is providing the structure for those entities, not us.
Okay, I just wanted to know how does it go about, how does it come into existence without the citizens of Highland Park having any type of, uh, say so in the matter?
Uh, yeah, that was a, that's been a bone of contention for everybody on the city council, how are people outside of the city? And it has more to do with the way that it's set up.
Okay.
As far as the, the actual law.
Well, thank you very much for your time this afternoon. I, I guess someone will get back with me about the, uh, speed bumps and about the street lights because according to Mayor McDonald, their, the budget does not have the funds for it at this time.
Okay, tell me your name again, ma'am.
Laverne, L.A. capital V is in victory, E.R.N.E., last name Swint, S is in Sam, W.I.N.T.
Thank you, Ms. Swint.
Three, one, three, seven, one, zero, zero, eight, nine, five.
Okay, I have Ms. Turner Johnson online. I'm, I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Can you, can you?
I'm unmute.
Can I hear your voice? Okay, go right ahead, ma'am.
Uh, good evening, Council President and Council members. I just wanted to thank the council for approving the resolution to, to apply a charging station grant. And I just wanted to suggest that when the staff, when the city employees go out of their way to try to get grant funds, it's very difficult. It adds to their workload to apply for grants. The city of Highland Park needs as many grants as we can get for as many projects as we can get funded. And I think it would be an important principle for the council to take a look at, that perhaps whenever there is a request from a staff member to apply for a grant, that council would support that staff member. Because it is an extra amount of work that has to be done. And also, in the, uh, response to the issue about the timeliness. You know that I've been in this nonprofit sector for over forty years, and oftentimes, we don't get an announcement of a grant until it's at the last minute. And then we have to really work extra hard to get that grant submitted by the due date. So I would hope that in the future, if there's ever an opportunity for the council to support an application for any funding for the city, that the council would always support the application. And then if at, you know, some date in the future, you disagree with the purpose of the grant money, you can always deny it because as Council President said, any revenue coming into the city has to be approved by city council. So thank you, council members, for approving that resolution for the EV charging section.
Thank you, ma'am. And so online, we also have Yolanda. I'm gonna get you too. So I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Oh, hold on, where'd she go? Yolanda?
Yes, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
I sure can, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Alright, good evening, Highland Park. Really quick, there was some conversation in the Concerned Citizens page on Facebook about the parking lot of the market, um, with all the potholes, um, um, craters, they're not even potholes. And then this evening, I had a taste for some Popeye's Chicken and it went up there, and their lot is horrible. Almost didn't get out of the hole. So who do we talk to? Because I'm sure somewhere in the charter, it has to address businesses keeping up their property. Um, and so who would we, who would we need to talk to or bring this to? Who's attention, uh, should we be bringing this to?
I think, um, wow, I think you probably have to email, that's on private property, so we'd have to dig into the ordinance. We have to find it in an ordinance.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm willing to help with the research and the ordinance.
Okay, and I think that you probably would want to contact, uh, Code Enforcement. Yeah, Officer Malone. At least he can make a note of it. I mean, if, if the, if the property owner has a hazard on their property, they may damage your vehicle. With the city can't pay for it, that would be the property owner's responsibility. So that, if there's a code violation there, Mr. Malone would be a great start for that.
Alright, Mr. Malone, thank you. Everybody have a great evening. Good meeting, good evening.
Okay, ma'am, let me restart the timer over here and let you get at it.
Okay, I'm speaking about item number five, about the vacant city treasure position. Um, I feel that we need to either resolve the issue with Ms. Lisa or find somebody ASAP, so we don't have everybody else all up in our business. That's the best way I could put it. You know what I'm saying? We didn't got the folks on our money business. We're stable now. Let's not put them back in it. If you're not gonna deal with her, fine, find somebody else right away. Veronica Brooks.
Veronica who?
Brooks. I'm sorry, y'all.
Okay, so seeing no more people come to the podium, we gonna move into council affairs. It is eight oh seven, we are cooking with gas. Starting with the council from the third district.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So tonight, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. I don't have anything personal. All I have is, is what's in the best interest and concern for the city. Uh, I'm concerned about these water rate hikes and, and the fact that they haven't come down. I tell you, when we were told that they will only be for six months. And now, uh, here we are, we're in the ninth month, well, well past June thirtieth, and I'm being told that it may be a possibility that they may be extended to the end of year. Now, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm barely feeding myself. You know, I can't afford to feed the city too. Um, and having said that, I'm thinking that what is necessary to protect the residents at this time, and only the residents, I would like to make a motion to put a temporary moratorium on any and all water shut offs for residential homes only until these rates come down to a normal point. Uh, until the rates come down for residential homes only, I wish to make a motion to put a moratorium on any and all water shut offs as long as those residents are continuously paying their bills. They should have some form of a safeguard until these rates come down because it's getting tight out here every single day. It's getting harder and harder to make these ends meet, and it's always seems to be the residents that are being bled as opposed to everybody else. So again, I make a motion to place a moratorium on all residential water shut offs as long as they are paying their bills.
That's all you have for us, sir?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I'm waiting on the motion to be finished. If it's gonna be supported, it's gonna be supported. It does not.
So it's, so it's open for discussion now that this motion, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman O'Shafi. If, if we had, if we had this problem over here, I want you to help me with that. We have a motion on the floor from Councilman O'Shafi to institute a moratorium on our, I, I, I know, I know where you're going. And we have, that motion was supported by Councilwoman Martin, and now it's out on the floor. So before you do, Mr. Bosnick, I just want to say, again, this is not something that we have. We don't have the authority to tell the water vendor not to send a bill to us. We also don't have the capacity to not collect. And to say that we're just gonna put a moratorium on water shut offs. We don't, we don't have the capacity to do that. So we can vote on that now, we sure can, and I will call the roll on it. If that's what you want to do. But, Mr. Bosnick, you said that you had something that you wanted to add?
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I guess just as a procedural matter, I think the proper motion would be to suspend the rules to, for the council to consider this item because this item is not on the agenda, it's not noticed. Okay. So if, if council by a super majority wishes to suspend the rules to bring this motion before the body, then that would be proper. But first, the rules would have to be suspended, uh, by four votes to allow that to occur.
You, you, you get what he's saying, Mr. Shafi? Because if we make this motion, that means we don't, it doesn't hold any authority. We have to suspend the rules by super majority.
I make a motion to temporarily suspend the rules to consider this item.
Question, ma'am, go ahead.
Councilman O'Shafi, say, say. This is that question.
I don't know what the effective emotion would be, uh, should it pass. I don't know what council's jurisdiction would be in terms of, um, acting on this, so that'd be something we'd have to look into. Uh, you could, uh, consequently certainly, um, consider the motion and vote on the motion, but whether it would, uh, carry with it, any legal authority would have to look into. I didn't know this matter was gonna be before, uh, the body until just two minutes ago.
Now, wait, 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 right, right now, right now, we have to vote on this, on suspending the rules. We don't want to muddy the waters. Let's get, let's. Now, wait, 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 wait. Right, right now, right now, we have to vote on this, on suspending the rules. We, we don't want to muddy the waters. Let's get, let's, let's do this. That's what, he said suspending.
I didn't say that.
He said, he says spending shut off. I, I misspoke. So right now, the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? This is a motion made by Councilman Al Shafi, supported by Councilwoman Martin, to suspend the normal rules to bring an item forward for voting.
Councilman Al Shafi?
Yes, to suspend the rules temporarily.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Monica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Go ahead and vote, because I have one more question.
Go right ahead.
The, the rules are procedure because it's on the agenda. Uh, yeah, the Council approved the agenda with particular items on it. Now you, uh, the Council wishes to go outside, uh, the rules of the meeting, uh, which were set by the items on the agenda.
All right, yes.
No, motion carries. So the rules have been suspended. Mr. Shafi, go ahead and make your motion. We're still in your Council Affairs.
So, so what I am simply saying, and, um,
No, let's, let's get the motion on the record clear, and then we can, then we can deliberate.
The motion on the record is, I wish to make a motion to place a moratorium, temporary moratorium, on all water shut offs for residential homes only until these water rates come down at the end of the year. So we only got about ninety more days until the end of the year. I don't see any harm with protecting the residents of Highland Park and keeping them safe at least until the end of the year, because it looks like this is gonna go on until the end of the year, and we're being bled dry. We were told six months. It's now turned into ninety months. Ninety months is about to turn into twelve in ninety more days. And, 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 and I do have a sneaky feeling that it's gonna go past New Year's guaranteed. I got a feeling it's gonna go into two thousand and twenty-five. So we can at least give the residents ninety days of protection. I don't see the harm in it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
Okay, good question. I have a question.
Yeah.
So the time span you want to put on is December thirty-first?
Yes.
Two thousand and twenty-four?
Yes.
And is there a certain amount, what is somebody, or maybe how to shut off, they put on?
Okay, well, I am talking about those residents, and if, if, if I am correct here, we were told that ninety percent of the residents in the City of Highland Park pay their bills. They pay their water bills. So, so, so what I'm saying, um, um, Ms. Monica, and, and please forgive me for being wrong. I'm simply saying, anybody who is in good standing with the City of Highland Park, who is currently paying their bills, I see no harm, no foul in ensuring that you get some form of protection. Now, if you're already in shut off status, get yourself together, and then you can come on to the team. But anybody that is paying their bills, who's not in shut off status, they should have some form of protection to help them for these last ninety days of this year. I don't see the harm in it. I don't see a problem with it. I'm pretty sure that Legal is going to find something. But, Mr. Bosnick, if you would answer and return my phone calls, we could have had this discussion about two months ago.
So I don't think that we're really looking for a reason not to, I can't speak for anyone else, but a reason to not do this. I just want to make sure that we are doing it correctly, um, in regards to a moratorium. The moratorium is already a temporary suspension, is what that is. Uh, and so I don't think that is bad. But there's some things like you just added, if you already in shut off, that you're not included in it.
Well, those people who are already in shut offs can get themselves together, they can straighten their bill out very easily, and then they will be protected under this shut off once they score their bill. I'm talking about those residents, and you know who you are. Ninety percent of the residents in this city pay their water bill. In fact, most of the water bill damage is on the residents. We pay for everything. We pay for everything. What does everybody else pay for? We pay for everything. Every time we turn around, we have something new that's coming out of our pockets, out of our taxes in this city. And I feel the residents deserve a break. They can use this ninety day break. It could take some worry and some relief off of their minds.
No disagreement, just, just saying. I think a couple of questions, like Ms. Robinson had, or they could be out there. I don't, and for me, I don't know, I guess, moratorium.
I was just about to say, so, so, so let me, let, let me, let me, before, I was, I was gonna, I know what you're about to do, and I wanted to let them talk, because I have the exact same position, and I want you to come after me, if you don't mind. No, I mean, I want you to, I want you to speak after me, because you know more than I know. I just want to say this to my colleagues. I have not interrupted. I've been sitting here biting the inside of my mouth. We went, we went to mediation with the Great Lakes Water Authority. We have a written agreement that has been approved by the City of Highland Park, the Great Lakes Water Authority, the State of Michigan, and all the other parties that are involved in. And we're talking about, in an ad hoc way, coming up with the resolution off of our hip that will become a written framework for the city that we haven't really fleshed out what these outcomes would be. You guys are asking great questions. What'll be the legal implications? What type of danger will we be putting ourselves in? Ninety percent of the people pay their water bill. We're creating something in an ad hoc way. None of us has attorneys, none of us really actually read the full context of the document to know if what we're doing, we even have the authority to do. Because billing for utilities that comes through the cities is a part of the city's administration. It is not under our purview. So again, we're overstepping. We're kind of violating the charter and overstepping in an area where, because it makes good sense. And we're talking about a small, infinitesimal number of people, so it wouldn't be a bad thing to look out for those few people that will fall through the cracks. The question is, do we have the authority? The question is, if we're talking about people who are in good standing, who are paying, really, how many people fall into that category? And are we willing to put forth the legal document that has to pass the snuff test all the way up through the State of Michigan? So when Mr. Garrett came forward and started to say, be careful, you know, I kind of want to keep this between the five of us. I kind of want us to work this out among ourselves, because the idea, the merits of the idea are good. But do we have the capacity to be able to make those type of, uh, legal constraints? We speak through our resolutions. We don't even have a resolution written. So we speak through our resolutions. What are we gonna send out, uh, council? Are we gonna just provide a document that the mayor has no choice but to veto? Um, these are questions that I'm asking. I don't have any answers. I'm gonna vote the way that I'm gonna vote. But I'm saying, considering what we're talking about doing, after all of this litigation, we're talking about a moratorium for eighty-nine hundred people, two thousand residents, maybe two hundred people in hot seat. Out of that, ten percent, twenty people, we're talking about two, three, four families that might actually fall into this. And we still have the, um, water relief programs out that are provided to us through the, through the state. We still have a bunch of other resources that were provided to us through the state that these people could tap into. Don't get me wrong, I do not disagree with the sentiment that the last thing we want is for one or two or three people between now and Christmas to be without their water. But to be able to put a moratorium, again, we're asking for a legal moratorium. We're asking for a state. We're asking for the ability to stop. We, we were gonna restrict the water authority from doing what is considered a part of their job.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have, I have done a little bit of research myself.
Okay.
Uh, we are actually not overreaching here.
Okay.
Okay, and this would not affect the ACO in any shape, form, or fashion. The ACO is gonna be paid no matter what. As long as the residents continue to do what they've been doing, and they know how important this is. Water's always been a very contentious issue in this city. And it's one thing that the Highland Park residents don't play about. They do not play about their water. They want their water, and they want to be safe when they turn on that tap and get their water. So I'm pretty sure that this is not gonna be issue. I do not believe that we are overstepping our bounds.
Okay.
In fact, in fact, the contract in which, uh, uh, MCA and everybody else is under, is under this council, okay? So, so they may be administered by the mayor, but we approve their contracts. So technically, they answer to us.
So let's do this. Look, go ahead. Let's go ahead and call the roll on this item. Um, and just let the chips fall. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I have also suggested, last year, begin this year, I would rather have a round with the guy. Propose to get whoever's shutting the water off in advance to pay the people information and program for them to pretend to be watching.
Okay, point of order. We are Mr., we are still in a council affairs for the Third District. We've been at this for twenty-five minutes. So council affairs for the whole city council normally takes twenty. We are in council affairs for the Third District for the last twenty-five minutes. I would like to go ahead and call the roll on this. Uh, Ms. Manica, go ahead.
Could there be an option here to, uh, uh, it sounds like you gave it, or you made, you sent an email to Legal. I'm not sure when you did.
No, I just sent an email. I gave him a personal call. He just never called me back.
Okay, I'm not aware of that.
Is it possible? Because I feel like there's a lot of question that I need answered, as well as just to make sure, uh, our boundary. And so we can bring it back, we can do an actual resolution of a moratorium, a moratorium that been done in Detroit for water for a small period of time, but we are not, you know what I'm saying? So, again, that's something new, and I, I think that we all need a little bit more time to really, we like the idea, but we need a little bit more time to make sure that we don't cause any more issues or problems.
Come on up, Mr. President.
So. I certainly understand what he's talking about. I understand what Councilman Shafi's talking about, being here for years, and what his frustration is. Um, I, I would suggest that if the council feels that way, the council can collectively write it, write, write, put this in writing and send this to the state. You don't, don't, don't do a resolution, but use, use, write a letter. And we've written plenty of letters over the last ten years in this legal, um, battle, and they've been very effective. I would recommend writing a letter and stating the frustration that you have, and this is something that you're entered, that you would like to entertain, but not actually do it, because the ramifications are, um, there's a lot of people who pay their bill. It's like the police, the, you know, the police are driving down the street. So when the people know that the police are driving down the street, they don't, they don't do crime, okay? And I hate to say that, but there's a lot of people who pay their bills because they don't want their water shut off. Okay, if you take that away, you're gonna, you're gonna lose some people who are paying their bills from, from the fear of being shut off. That, I, I'm not saying that's the right thing. I, I don't.
But you know, I, 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 I don't mean to.
Chair is about to call time, because we've been at this for almost, I mean, not on you, I'm just saying. At, after this, this is the last line of question, and I'm gonna call.
I'm just, I'm just simply saying that Detroit has done this, and what it did, it didn't have an adverse effect. It actually got people up off their butts to come down and work out with the City of Detroit to get their water squared away. It actually got people motivated when they made this kind gesture.
And I'm gonna let that be the last, and I'm gonna let that be the last, and I'm going to let that be the last statement. We're still in council affairs, under Councilman for the Third District. We have suspended the rules.
Okay.
We have brought a motion to the floor. We have been at this for thirty minutes. And, Mr. Garrett, I hate to cut you off, but I have to.
We've done amnesty programs too.
I know, I know, I know, I know. And there's, there's a, there's a legal claim order we're stepping in. So what I'm gonna do right now is I'm gonna call for the vote. The rules have been suspended. Four out of five members allowed the rules to be suspended. Now, we're about to make a motion on an item for a resolution that we don't have legal implications that we don't know, but it was made properly, and it was made on the appropriate rules. So we're gonna call the roll on the motion made by Mr. Al Shafi to institute a resolution to call for a moratorium on water shut offs for customers in the City of Highland Park between now and the end of the year. So would you call the roll on that motion? It was supported by Councilwoman Ma, Martin. Go ahead and call the roll on that.
Councilman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Monica?
Oh.
Councilwoman Robinson?
I'm gonna vote yes, because I don't want to be much water shut off. I need to know what to do around.
Council President?
I'm voting no on this motion. Thank you very much. We're gonna move into council affairs for Ms. Martin. Motion carries.
Okay.
Motion carries, for three to two. Go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry. I had to make that declaration for the clerk.
Okay, um, so to the shore, uh, say, for the in-omperas night, I also want, uh, compliment, um, D P W. Um, a lot of the citizens saying that, uh, D P W has been doing a great job, I mean, grass, uh, but they say lots, so I just want to say, thank you very much. Um, that, um, so like I said, I'm going to, uh,
Good evening. Um, I just want to say, I'm sorry, I'm kind of thrown back right now. I'm gonna say this. I, I don't want anybody's water cut off as well, but and I know we look at a lot of things that other people are doing, so we need to have all of the information while we're choosing. And if we do not have all the information, or you still have a question, just like you do on some other stuff, to me, that just really don't make sense. You should set it back and have questions answered for these types of things too, because this is how we get into those, those things that we don't want to get into, those lawsuits, what you always coming at with us, or saying, we're gonna be in a lawsuit, we're gonna be in a lawsuit. But we do things so rapidly sometime that we don't think about. We do things so rapidly we'll think about. When you talk about Detroit, and I mentioned it, being in a moratorium happening, they also had other things that were components of that, like working with Wayne Metro. And so it wasn't just the city council or whoever said, hey, let's do a moratorium. It was, they had quite a few things in place when they did that. And that's what people don't know and don't see. When they called those moratoriums, it was things that those residents still needed to go do, or they needed to call, as Ms. Robinson said, whatever resources that's out there to provide that water. And so we gotta start thinking about those things. We, we, we put a lot of things on emotion and want to look good to the citizens. I'm, I'm fine with that. But if we're gonna look good to the citizens, that's not gonna get us in trouble. We're not saying we want to get in trouble. Giving that to you, because I looked at, I looked at you, and there was some hesitation. I looked at you, and you agreed that, no, we need to find this out. But you voted the other way. So that's no problem. I'm not trying to change your voting. I was trying to give you some perspective on some of the things that we're doing, when we're doing it, versus, I just need, um, Mr. Johnson to be like, yes, she did that, and I'm not gonna have to pay my bill. I agree with Mr. Garrett. There are gonna be some people that say, guess what? Oh, there's no shut off? Oh, I can hold off. Ooh, I gotta pay that bill. I'll go pay Macy's instead. Or whatever else in the state, or I'm gonna go out of town, because now I can go out of town. And, and that's it. I mean, that's that. Um, everybody, we've had a lot of things happen in the city this, this past weekend and other times. Go out and support what's happening in your city. Uh, there are other commissions. So some people came up today, and they asked about different things that can happen, like speed bumps, uh, sign signs. Those aren't traffic commission questions as well. So you should be going to that traffic commission meeting. If it's something to do with the police, you should be going to chat with the chief or the police commissioner meeting. Okay, everything, not necessarily starts here or steps here. Okay, uh, I, some people have some questions for me with, with water. I have a couple of papers for you. I did pass those out. If they did not answer your question, or you didn't get it, I'll give it to you. But if, um, your question still didn't get answered, let me know. We'll write it down, and I will get it to the engineers. I think there was one other in, in my district. Oh, cannabis or Victor, cannabis or something, I can't remember it. It is not, nothing's happening there. They, they, they're painting, and he's got a building that is there. Nothing's happened at that building. Uh, and I understand, again, that might be a police question or administrative question about whether St. Belad or somewhere else is operating illegally. Okay, so I know a lot of people want to deal in cannabis, guys. I get it, but we are trying to generate revenue for the city. And some other ways to generate revenue is stuff like parking. Parking, you know, uh, and, and different other stuff, but in, in your property taxes. And that's getting people here developing, developing houses and different things like that. So I hope that I covered some of the things they asked me in uh, my district and outside. Uh, remember that there's a citywide cleanup that should be starting that happens in September. Uh, the mayor, I'm sure, will give out that date again, but I believe it is September fourteenth. Uh, again, dumpsters will be located logistically, that everybody can use them. They cannot go in front of your house. It cannot go on the side of your house. So, or on your actual street, unless it, you're just forced to do that, and it won't go on grass. So just wanted to put that out there. September fourteenth, I believe, will be that, that cleanup. Just look for files from the administration Just look for flyers from the administration on on the cleanup. Uh, I want to commend some Highland Park students, ex-Highland Park students that have businesses. They gave away books bags and book supplies this past weekend at Boys and Girls Club. Why am I mentioning them? Because so many people have done it, including our rec center. It's because they are ex Highland or they're alumni of Highland Park High School. And so there are people giving back, and they're young people. They're not in the fifties or their forties.
Can you mute?
They're young people that are trying to give back and actually want to become part of the city, and that's because we need to start looking for young people who want to be part and start getting involved in what
The sound is muted? I don't understand. Sound is muted. Okay. Everybody should still be able to hear me here. Um, that information will be useful to the role, to the traffic commission, of course, but also to the team that's working with MCA. Mr. B. Anthony, he left from out of here. I think members of council, we should start to go by and physically see some of the issues that citizens have so that we can it is not in our purview to tell the city what to do, but the more that we see, the more that we are aware of, the more physical pictures that we take, the the level of empathy, we might be able to get closer to those people, have a conversation about whatever resources we could provide. So on the last note, on the thing that we did, let me just make this clear. The meters are still not in. The city is struggling with the Great Lakes Water Authority. They are a juggernaut. They have been kicking our ass for almost ten years. And I might have a belief, or I might suspect the reason why they don't necessarily want those water meters in, but the framework of our agreement is still pretty solid. And my desire not to poke that bear on what Ms. Manica described as being emotional, which is fair. We are all human. Me deciding I didn't want to do that was because I don't know what the ramifications are gonna be. I have absolutely no idea. I don't want to put my, I don't want to stamp my name on something that'll come back later on and blow up in my face. Um, that's the reason why I had an issue with that. So school started today. Everybody in Metro Detroit should be back at school, and I'm back in the classroom teaching. And, um, I had an opportunity to be at a high school today, and I saw something that was very disturbing. And it has a lot to do with kids in the hallways. And, um, I'm gonna try to be as brief as I possibly can. Our children are lacking critical thinking skills. They don't know how to make good decisions. And so as I was seeing the children doing things, I had to look out the window, and I also saw the parents that were dropping them off. And it used to be that common sense was a thing that was shared by all, but it's not. Critical thinking skills. I remember growing up as a kid going to Sister Clarita Muhammad. Before I could even go to the bathroom on my own, we were taught self-control and self-discipline and self-respect and self-awareness because we were a part of something larger. So critical thinking was the highest priority to us. And so here I am looking at kids, and I'm asking myself about the adults in the community. Do we have good critical thinking skills? Are we looking at the data? Are we making good assessments? Are we making good judgments? And so from now until the end of the year, until June, actually, you're gonna be asking your kids to get up every morning, wash up, brush their teeth, get dressed, gonna be kicking them out the house in the morning, sending them away for eight hours, and you're expecting your children to exercise good critical thinking skills. And I just want everybody with children in their family to ask a question. Am I displaying or exhibiting good critical thinking skills? Am I acting in such a way that the outcomes that I expect to get are based on good, reasonable, sound judgment? Or am I not? I think it's important because all of the stuff that we're doing here as as elected officials, we're deliberating on things that are going to fall in the hands of our children. And what basically are we going to leave them? What are we going to leave our children if we're not making good decisions as elected officials, if we're not making good decisions as people? So I would urge you, as you send your loved ones off to school, um, practice what you preach. Other than that, yeah, we are gonna, I can declare the meeting adjourned. I'm gonna entertain a motion. How are we doing this? You missed citizens petition. So who? Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye, all those opposed? Meeting adjourned. You missed citizens comment.